Thank you for coming. We're going to our second meeting of the month here in Biloxi. We have Pastor Chad Craft, House of Lords, and Gupko. If you'll come up and please lead us in prayer. Here we are, amen.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Let's all pray. God, we ask that you protect us, that you keep us, that you use us, and that you meet with us. But we don't just pray prayers of defense. We pray prayers of offense for our great county and city. That you give us great weather, of course, and unprecedented tourism and progress for our county. We pray that you would prosper the life and business and home of every public servant, that when they give of their time, you would multiply it and give it back. That you would give them peace in the parts of their life that are painful. That you bless families in our great county and of our public servants. That you keep every county and city employee safe, that whatever might be going on in their life, that they would see some hope today in the middle of it all. You are faithful to us. You are good to us. We give you our attention. We give you our hearts. But could you have given all of us so much? And as your Holy Spirit meets with us, let peace reign. Let righteousness honor you. And let joy be evident in our lives and in our communities. And I don't know if it's fair to pray it at a board of supervisors' meeting, but let the best man win. We ask it all in Jesus' name. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm bored of trying to sit down hard. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have an addendum that we're going to add. Come on out and share the following. We'll do that after you get to share, sir. First thing I feel is item number one is recognize Gilbert Ramsey, Military Veterans Association Outreach Specialist, as he discussed accessibility to the Diablo Valley Park, City of C.C. Road, White Plains Road. Mr. Ramsey, I want to come up and introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Gilbert Ramsey, Military Veterans Association Innovation Outreach Specialist. And what I'm doing, I'm here to introduce a nature outreach capabilities within our community, District One, White Plains Road and C.C. Road, accessibility to our new nature trails park in Diabloville, which was introduced with Thailand's funds. So we have a kayaking launch system for disabled people there, where wheelchairs be rolled up to and have access to the river. But what's happened is for that location, when it got into the river, the current takes them downriver. So what I'm trying to do is introduce more accessibility upriver so they can come down to the location into the park. So it's intriguing. It has opportunity because that location, Mississippi Land Trust, also has 200 acres there to accommodate disabled people for an outreach source. So they offer this opportunity to initiate it appropriately. So what I've done is I've networked since 2013 on proposal with restored funds. It was in 2013. So what I've done is just March 7th, initiated with hand recreation opportunities. I'm asking you to introduce me, Ms. Young. I'm coming from Economic Development Opportunity, Tourism Opportunity, and all those combined. I would like to open Coliseum to introduce United States Chamber with Gina Ramonho, C-12 Chairman, USPTO for Innovative Ideas, a manufacturing idea. I'd like to retain the students. I would like to eliminate student loans. I'm here to represent Mississippi more appropriately instead of Mississippi Burnham. My mother recognized Nelson Mandela at her services, and she's buried in National Cemetery. I want to represent Colonel Dick Wilson and all brothers and sisters. I have something else to introduce to you about Ukraine. Ukraine has a complicated situation right now because they logistics, they export rice and wheat to Asia and Africa. Well, that's going to have poverty and nutritional options for that community. So what's happening is the railroad is a smaller size in Ukraine. And for logistic purposes, it's not going to have capability. They've been destroyed. So we'd like to develop these railroad accessible means for them to have economic development options to feed these countries. It's called Hire the Heroes and Spouses, United States Chamber Talent Services. I have this for us, ladies and gentlemen. I've been invited to, where? Thailand in May for manufacturing opportunities, Asia Railroad Summit. I have this for us. Just step up to the plate and let's introduce myself to Ms. Young and Mr. Development Authority for Exporting Sponsorship Opportunities. Thank you for your assistance and guidance.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. It's an inconvenience to you. Next on the agenda, we're going to move item number 53 up, and we're going to discuss it right now. And then we'll come back to this question in just a moment. Item 53, Order Considered Resolution for Harrison County Development Commission, acknowledging that Summerfield Senior Living, Senior Living Gulfport LLC has properly fulfilled all requirements of Mississippi Code of Annointed Section 2734-104 for Avalon Tax Exemption for certain capital investments made in Harrison County and met the requirements set forth in Harrison County Tax Abatement Policy. Motion?
Motion.
Second discussion. Do you get a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. You want to come up?
Good morning.
Good morning. You can state your name for the record, please.
My name is Patricia Markham. I'm sorry, my name and what else did you say?
Address.
Address. And I live at...
You can state your business.
A Summerfield Retirement Community, 14744 North Swan Road in Gulfport. So I'm Patricia Markham, and I'm here today with my husband and son as owners of Summerfield Retirement Community. We own and operate four communities, three in Louisiana and our newest one in Mississippi. We're a licensed healthcare provider of assisted living and memory care services for the elderly. We're a small family-owned and operated business. We opened our first community in 2009 in Slidell, and since then, we've added a second one in Slidell, as well as one in Hammond in 2016, along with the one we just opened in Gulfport. Our newest community of 86 apartments was recently completed and opened for business in June of 2021 in Gulfport. With our Gulfport community, we realized we had a location with the location and size that we could offer something unique in senior living. So we have created a property with uncommon design in this business. We have a barn, farm animals, a stopped fishing pier, vegetable garden, certified wildlife sanctuary, playground, bocce card, putting green, and many other amenities. We wanted to create a showcase that would attract residents and their friends to this area. We feel it is important for us to provide a little bit of background to the supervisors of Harrison County about our development. While searching for a site to begin development of our fourth community, we heard about the Mississippi Healthcare Industry Zone Incentive Program that was passed to incentivize development of certain healthcare industry projects. This incentive program was a major factor in our selection of the site on North Swan Road. The site was eligible for the program because it was located within five miles of an acute care hospital with 375 beds. But also, as important, the community had a significant need for care and housing for the elderly. We applied for and were certified by the State of Mississippi for this healthcare zone incentive program. The requirements of the program include the condition that the project exceeds $10 million and that the project generates a minimum of 25 full-time jobs. Summerfield has spent over $11 million on the project and has created 42 full-time and 15 part-time permanent jobs in our operations. The primary benefit we sought with this incentive program was eligibility for the 10-year property tax abatement. Following our initial application to the county, we were told we could not apply for the tax abatement until the money had actually been spent and the project had been completed. So we put our money where our mouth was, and we went ahead and built it. Summerfield has met and exceeded all the minimum criteria for the incentive program.
Who told you?
But...
I'm sorry. Who told you that?
That we had to wait till the end? Our attorney. The county? Okay, I'm sorry, county.
Who at the county?
The Development Commission Attorney.
The Development Commission's attorney.
Were you given any assurances either from MDA or anyone down the line that the tax abatement was assured that the county would give you the tax rate?
No. I mean, no. But no one said it wasn't either. So we, I mean, we weren't told either way that that was the case.
Who gave you the criteria of the $10 million and the 25 jobs?
The state's requirements.
MDA? And so did you go through their process?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything from them saying you're qualified?
Absolutely.
We have a letter from everything.
Did you get money from there?
So they...
No.
You want to come up? We'll get it kind of out of the line. You want to come up and introduce yourself?
Yes, sorry. My name's Robert Wiggy. I work with Summit Credits. We represent Summerfield. Do a lot of their incentives in Louisiana. This is our first project with them in Mississippi. So we applied to the state, the MDA, back in early 2020 and were approved. So with the healthcare incentive, there's two facets. There's a sales tax exemption on the materials that are purchased, and then the secondary incentive is the property tax abatement. So they were approved by the state for this incentive, and they were granted that sales tax exemption. Now unfortunately, with the contractor and the way things worked out, they weren't able to take advantage of that sales tax exemption as the purchases have to be made by the applicant to the program and not the contractor. So anyway, they were approved through the state's program.
But this is a county.
Correct. And you understand that.
And I don't know, just since I've been on the board, which has been about six years now, we've never given 100% tax abatement to one of ours.
And we've never given it to a nursing home.
So the need for assisted living is growing exponentially. And the state recognized that back in 2012 when they passed this initiative. And the state is doing everything they can to stand behind and support these businesses. And you're right, it is your decision. It's up to your discretion to choose this. And if it would have been our preference, we would have liked to come before you before the project started. But we were told by the assessor's office and the county that we had to wait until the property was complete before we could come before you.
I don't know if we have anybody in here that can answer this question, but have we had any assistant living construction or other people developing assistant living facilities that were aware of or have applied through MDA for this extension in Harrison County? I'm not aware of it.
We have the Blake that just opened about three years ago.
There was no information. I was just curious as to why they weren't informed. What year, sir, was this?
It was passed in 2012.
That's been eight, nine years ago.
And when we originally talked to the assessor's office back in 2020, they had not done a project, a healthcare initiative project, in Harrison County. So the assessor actually had to reach out to other counties. I'm not sure which county they reached out to to get the direction that they received that we needed to wait until the end.
I have one question. You said earlier that you were told by MDA that you would get a sales tax exemption, but that didn't transpire?
So it was granted. The exemption was granted, but it's granted in the name of the applicant, which is Summerfield Senior Living. And since they hired a contractor to purchase the materials, those materials didn't qualify for the exemption because Summerfield Living was not on the invoices for the materials.
Tough luck on that one.
Got you on that one.
Okay. Well, I would say that we do appreciate the business, and there's always a need and a room for assistant living. And I can certainly understand your concern and you wanting the tax abatement. I would do the same thing. Want her to try?
I'll make a motion to deny the request.
We got a motion on the table.
A motion.
Got a motion on the table. That's what we get.
I've been there. I saw it under construction. I think it's a fabulous facility. But in my eyes, if we grant to you, then it opens the door to many, many more. And we have one that's just opened on Pops Dairy Road. So the floodgates are open, and we've already lost $600,000, I think. Was it $600,000 on the hospital that's minutes from where you are this year? So anyway, I'd just like to say that's the reason.
And I guess I... Can I speak?
Yeah.
Okay. So I understand that. And one of the things we wanted to bring up was just the fact that this property was generating very little income before. And so we have, you know, we continue to spend money every month in our poor supplies and services. We have employed...
We're not here full-time.
Let me see. 42 full-time, 15 part-time. So we are, and I understand that you all have to pay and do your services also. But we're also adding to it because of the development of this plan. We've also added money to your budget. We're not looking to just take it away. We're also looking to add and to continue to add.
Ma'am, if I may, what led you to the Harrison County Development Commission? Who led you?
Hi, I'm Ryan Markham, Patricia's son. So when we originally found out about the program, we said, you know, this is a great incentive program, and you know, we run our business on very, very small margins. So you know, the property tax benefit was significant.
So what led you, maybe I'm not being clear, how did you know to go to the Harrison County Development Commission? Who steered you to them?
You know, when we made the application to the state, I think the state was the one who directed us to contact the local county authority.
Because you're not in an industrial park or anything, so I can't figure that out.
So part of the, and to the point, that's why I wanted to just make the point is that they have a location restrictions on which facilities are within this radius of the acute care hospitals. So although maybe other communities had been built before, if they were outside of that radius, they wouldn't be eligible for this program. So we specifically picked a site that was within that radius. And you know, like they mentioned, the sales tax didn't really work out for us. So we were hitching our wagon to this. Well, this is going to be, you know, the big driver. And you know, to her point about this was a long vacant property. We plan to be here for a very long time. And so we plan on paying taxes on the full boat, you know, and definitely after that 10-year, whatever y'all might approve, you know, versus it just being a vacant land. You know, we hire, we employ a lot of local vendors, suppliers. You know, we have a significant economic impact, notwithstanding just the added amount of taxes. So.
Are you aware of any other assistant living facilities in the state that has benefited from this particular legislation?
Yes, sir. I think there was one. I'm not sure what county, Robert.
So I know Rankin County has at least one facility. They have it on their website. I can get you a list. We can pull together that information if you'd like. But I'm certain there are several other communities that have qualified for this incentive.
And for us, you know, one of the things about this project is we're trying not to, you know, referencing the Blake and some of these other new ones, they have very high rates, rental rates. And so our goal for this project was to offer, you know, full suite of amenities, but also to keep our rental rates reasonable.
How much is an average person?
So for example, we have, and there's no one else that offers this. We have a studio apartment starting at $1,900 per month, and this is for assistant living. So I mean, obviously, we have different care that gets added to that, but you know.
And what's your occupancy right now?
Approximately 72%. So we've, yeah, I mean, it's been a real big percent.
72% of $1,900 goes up from there.
Yes, ma'am.
And you got 72%.
And we have 18.
President, if I may, I'd like to offer a substitute motion since we've got a motion to consider to deny this request.
Well, I'd like to still comment. Second, second discussion. You said, I would like that list of all the other ones who qualify in the state. You said that MDA told you, you know, that you would qualify. Was it state tax breaks? Was it anything in writing that MDA gave you saying that? I'd like that as well. My name's Rebecca. I'd like the list of other communities such as this in Rankin County or whatever other county, and I'd like that. And I'm wondering why, Commissioner Swetman, you're here, not to put you on the hot seat, but why would the commission tell them this if it was not, I mean, my word is my bond, and that should be the truth for our county? So why did the planning commission even come up with this vote? Can you enlighten me? I mean, the development commission, sorry.
He voted against it.
Not planning. I know, but I'm just curious. I mean, honestly, how did the planning commission?
The commission has a body in its minutes. It did not make any commitment to anything, so that did not occur. And they're not saying that it did. The Harrison County Development Commission made no commitment. We, like the board of supervisors, speak through our minutes.
No, I understand. And Ramsey's here. Can we ask her?
The development commission did take a vote. What was the vote? What was the vote for? I know you can't...
The vote?
Listen, I know you can't. The development commission does not have authority to grant a tax exemption.
Right.
What was the vote? To support the request for a tax exemption? What was your vote on?
There was an original resolution
That's right.
to grant an abate. I voted against it. Then there was a substitute resolution that came back that didn't list an amount, just that they met the requirements, which is the resolution you have today. And then the commission recommend some abate, and that's what you got. And that's what's before you now. No dollar amount, so.
But that's to answer your question. There was.
That's right.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Where you put me at? Be brief, please.
I will be very brief. My name is Mariah Furs, and I live on Barclay Drive in Pasca Chan. And I really don't have a dog in the fight yet. My mother is 90. She is as sharp as a tack right now, but she's getting cloudy days. This is a very big issue. I've started my research. I've looked at the Blake, which is way expensive. This sounds like Nirvana. This is an answer we're looking for, and they are on a piece of property that didn't make you any money. So I really don't get the issue. I just want to tell you that as a constituent and someone with no dog in the fight yet, I think this is something you want in your county because it's coming. Done.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Out of favor, the motion say aye. Out of opposed? Okay, motion to deny. Item number two, recognize Shelley Swetman, President and CEO of People's Bank, Harrison County Main Depository, to report qualified depositors in Harrison County Monetized Funds Investment allocation.
I'm Chappelle Swetman. I'm President of People's Bank. I have CJ Dunaway with me. He's in charge of our investment area. And the reason I bring him along is because I think the last time I came before the supervisors, about the only person that might have been there was maybe Mr. Marlon Lagnor over there. So it has changed a little. What we have with the Harrison County Depository, this came out of over 30 years ago with Chance Rekberg, Nikki Creel. He said, "We need to try and get something that's fair to all the banks." In the old days, when you had the road bridge fund and you had all sorts of pockets of money all over the county, they said, "Let's try and be fair to everybody." You might have a bank or maybe a merchant's bank and lent somebody his daughter or something on their house. So everybody was trying to take care of the banks. Well, Nikki recognized that this, a formula that could be agreed upon would probably be the best thing. And basically, the formula covers bond issues where it does not cover, it covers all bond issues except a bond issue where a financial institution is named as a trustee of the bond issue, an entity such as a Harrison County School District or other sub-entity, and where an agency has already placed its funds on deposit, maybe in a certificate of deposit bid format. Basically, the basic components that we have in the formula are as follows. The capital of that financial institution, the deposits that those banks have in the county, and the number of employees that work in Harrison County. Other components that we've used in the past have been taxes paid to Harrison County, loans in Harrison County. That one became very difficult to trace. So but what we have right now here is the capital, deposit, and the number of employees, which are easily traceable. Basically, we had a formula that no one bank could have more than 45%. If you were a branch bank in the county, you would be entitled to 2% of the deposit. If you were a bank that was headquartered in Harrison County, you could go to 3%. Now, over the years, this has worked fairly well. However, we're coming to see a phenomenon, and that is the banks are too flush with cash, especially this time of year. Now, as we get toward December, as the money starts flowing back out to the various entities, that won't be such a big problem. But today, right now, the investment in the depository fund is right at $75 million. So what we've seen lately, in the last few years, because all the banks are getting a lot of money coming, all the CARES Act, the COVID, all these other acts, there is a lot of cash there. So what we have seen is we've seen four of the larger banks have closed out, and they said, "Yes, we'll write, I want to be a depository, but I don't want to be a part of the fund." So and those banks were Regions Bank, Bancorp South, Citizens Bank, and Whitney Bank. And all of this has occurred in about the last three or four years. So one thing right now, the county has gone to a four-year period of time. So it is my understanding that if you're qualified, you're qualified for the term of that bid. So if you want to leave it and then come back in, you can. And we've had a couple of banks that have done that in the past. Several items that the banks have had to take and discuss, and we're still trying to get feedback from the other banks, is what is happening out there in the economy. The county has been very fair to the banks. But one of the things you do is you can't pick up the nightly news without reading gases going up another 50, 60 cents a gallon. So everybody is worried to death about inflation. And that's what a lot of those investment officers are doing at some of these financial institutions. Like I said, the county has been fair to us. What everybody is worried about is this thing taking out, just skyrocketing. And the banks that have several investment divisions, they're trying to figure out how to handle this money that rolls over every 30 days. So a couple of the things that we're still trying to work through are, what's the best thing to give? A variable rate or a fixed rate? Should there be a floor or a ceiling or both? Right now, our bank is anticipating on Tuesday... Right now, our bank is anticipating on Tuesday, the Federal Reserve increasing the Fed Funds Rates another 25 basis points. And we're also looking like they're going to be increasing that the next four meetings after that. So, right now, it could go up 1, 1 and 1/4% almost in three-month period of time. So, that's what we're addressing right now. And it'll be all over the headline news on Tuesday. So, we've asked the banks that have separate investment departments, rather than the local ones here, to give us some type of guidance. What are they trying to look for? Give us some indication of what's going to happen. We don't want to get to a situation where one or two of the other banks bail out. What are we going to do? Generally, in the past, we've had the capacity to absorb that within the banks that were in the group. But we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if any other banks are going to step aside for a while and let things settle down. So, that's basically where we are. We've got, the allocations right now are, People's Bank is allocated 33%. 40%. Okay, but what you got there? That's one we're allocated for the month of March. Okay, thank you, CJ. People's Bank is going, right now, I'll give you what it's going to be on April 1st. People's Bank will have 40%. Community Bank will have 25%. The First will have 24%. And Trustmark will have 11%. So, that's what the existing allocations are. And hopefully, no one else will leave, but we don't know. What happens is the 30-day money gets, what everybody's worried about is an inverted yield curve, where the short-term curve is higher than the longer-term money. So.
Chavis, I think bottom line is what the board is, bottom line for the board of supervisors is we understand the formula. I mean, that's been in existence, as you said, since I've been here. It's the interest rates that we're receiving on our money. And I say this as a side or a joke. If the interest rates keep going as they are, first thing we're going to be doing is paying you interest to keep our money.
Well, that's what I told Bill. I told Bill Holmes that at the Coliseum. One time, he wanted to bid some money, and I said, Bill, I'm going to be able to give you 1/4 or 1%. He said, that sounds like a pretty good rate. What does that mean? I said, no, $100,000? You have to pay me $250.
That's where we're going to.
Yeah.
I guess the bottom line is that our concern is the interest rate that we're receiving. And of course, like you said, you got to pull the Fed screaming and hollering to increase the interest rates. So, you know, I guess we need to wait and see. I guess we're at the point where things just can't stand as it is.
We agree with you 100%. I can't tell you how many little old ladies come in and say, look, this is my retirement.
Yes.
And the Federal Reserve is controlling what is happening out there in the market. But right now, I think they've lost control, and interest rates are headed up. How much higher, I don't know. But I agree with you. The rates are, I think, well below normal. I've been in the Treasury Bill market for 45 years, and I've never seen it like this.
In our interest, if I understand, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but our interest on the money that we deposit in the various banks is based on that federal.
That is correct. Well, basically, we set it off at the Treasury Bill rate, the 30-day Treasury Bill, because that's what's indicated by state law.
And don't we get some small percentage rate over the Treasury Bill?
If, not at this point. Generally, you bid the bill, or if someone bids a fixed rate. But nobody, I don't think the county's had a fixed rate in a long time. And I don't know if I would recommend a fixed rate for the county right now. Because this is where you get the benefit of it.
Definitely not now.
So, we are sort of waiting to see what happens on Tuesday. We'll get back with you. Two or three of the other banks are going to get back. They're going to give me at least an indication. I just need to know if something happens, April, May, or June, if somebody backs out, if we have the capacity to do it. Then the only other thing, if we don't have the capacity to do it, we will probably be coming back to you and say, well, we're going to recommend that you invest directly in Treasury bills.
So, if one of these other banks pulls out?
I think if one pulls out, we're okay, I think. If two pulls out, we don't know. But what happens is they're talking to their investment officers and say, it's hard for me to place $15, $20 million funds every 30 days.
Chavis, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
From your banking experience, now I'm going to ask a question from the board of supervisors' perspective. Normally, competition is the best way to increase. For example, why wouldn't it be beneficial, not considering the banks, but beneficial for the county and the taxpayer to bid our interest rate out? If we go out for bid and tell the banks, you bid what you will give us interest on our money?
Yes, that's another alternative. And the only issue that they have there, the state law indicates that we're dealing with, quote, excess funds to the county. And these excess funds basically are those funds that you will need over and above 30 days of payments that the county has to make.
But that is an option.
Yes, sir, it is. So, I'm probably going to be getting back with y'all in about 30 or 45 days because all these other banks have other areas. Some have to go to Henningsburg, some have to go to other places and get back and tell the local people what they're going to be doing. So, that's what we're working on right now. Does anybody have any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, we really appreciate you coming, giving us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, only a few items briefly. Recognize Matt McDonald and Michelle Mellingman. Executive Assistant Executive Director, Mississippi Coast Coliseum, Coliseum Convention Center.
Good morning. I'm Matt McDonald, your Executive Director, Mississippi Coast Coliseum. And joining me is Michelle Miniman, our Assistant Executive Director. She's the hardest working, the hardest working girl in show business right there. In 2015, the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Commission voted to purchase property on Highway 90 south of the convention center and just west of the Coliseum. It was the old Holiday Inn site that Bancorp South had taken through default by a developer. Prior to that, Bancorp South had controlled that property, I want to say since 2009 or 2010. They were gracious enough to allow us to utilize that site for overflow parking for all those years. But in 2015, they had to get that property off their books, and they were going out for bid for it. Before that bid happened, I, along with the President of Bancorp South, met with Governor Phil Bryant, and we negotiated what we thought was the fairest and lowest amount of money that that land could be purchased for. We purchased that land for $4 million, 8.2 acres. I'm here today to tell y'all, we have no debt on that land anymore.
Y'all paid it off.
It has completely paid off. That was done in seven years, roughly, or a little over six, I should say. And it was done through the middle of a pandemic when all of our revenue streams were basically shut down. So, I want y'all to know that we're doing everything that we can to keep that building running in the most efficient way possible. We did not have to come to y'all to go into our restricted trust fund. I'm hoping, as long as I'm your director, I never have to.
Still got about six, eight?
Seven.
Seven there?
It's a little less than that. The market isn't acting right, but when the market acts right, it'll be over seven.
It'll be a bit fast.
Yeah. But I did once on another, because I know there was some concern about us carrying debt. We are debt-free, other than the bonds that are paying off the construction of the convention center, which y'all share in that responsibility, and I thank y'all for doing that. Now, what are we using the property for? Michelle put out a rendering of the parking lot that we're going to come in and develop there. While we've been using it for parking, it's certainly not legitimate parking, but it's about to be. These funds were a part of the Restore Act that Governor Phil Bryant gave us back in 2016. The carryover, along with additional Restore Act funding that Governor Tate Reeves gave us two years ago, will allow us to complete that project, as well as put a brand-new Highway 90 marquee sign, state-of-the-art video board, to where we can direct people into those parking lots.
Either replace the one we have or add one?
Replace the one. Yeah. That technology, that technology is 15 years old. It's about shot. And it's hard to get parts because they're all coming out of China. Fortunately, the company that was selected in the bid process to do this project.
Is local?
It's American-made parts, so we can get parts. So, that won't be an issue. They're out of Tennessee.
Matt, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Don't interrupt your presentation, but the proposed highway, Pops Ferry Road to Highway 90, will that affect that property to come through that property?
Yes, sir. We have already sold a little over two acres of that 8.2 we sold to the city of Biloxi for right of way. The money that we had, that we got from the sale of that parcel, went towards paying off the debt service on that land because there was a lien on the property. Same thing, we had to pay off the remaining $928,000 last month to satisfy removing the lien for the federal government to reimburse us for the construction of that parking lot. Now, there is a 15-year window where if anything is built on that land, the developer would have to pay off a portion of $2.2 million to satisfy the federal government's interest. But after 15 years, that interest goes away. Now, Pops Ferry, I don't know their timeline. I know that they still are trying to find the funding to do it. We're proceeding as if they're going to do it. Eventually, we'll have to grow our footprint for additional parking, especially if we get a hotel that cordons off a section of our parking lot in front of the convention center. That would be parking that we would have to replace pretty quickly.
I would expect priority is on the bridge issue right now.
For them, I think actually, they're going to move forward with the Phase 1, which is 90-to-pass road, with or without the bridge. I think they're trying very hard to get this project off the ground. I've not gotten with Scott Delano or any of our delegation to see if there's any funding in Jackson that may help them or hurt them. We too would like to get some help to where we can grow our footprint, but we're not there yet. But we will come back to you when we get there. On another couple of positive notes, our bookings are strong. They are very, very strong. We just completed a 10-day run that featured two sold-out country shows with Reba McEntire and Morgan Wallen that grossed well over $1 million each. We had three successful shows for monster trucks. We had two conventions, a Montegraw Ball, and several other pieces, a military ball and several other pieces of business, all in that 10-day window. And it was serious revenue for the facility. Our bookings in April, we don't have a weekend open. We're solid. That's, we have an outdoor show April 2nd. We have Black Spring Break, one event on April 9th. We have a comedian in the arena for April 16th. And we have the Crawfish Music Festival the following weekend for five days. All of them will generate good revenue for us. May is strong, June is strong. Everything's looking really good there. So, I want to thank y'all for the support that you give us. Michelle can answer any questions dealing with the parking lot. It's really going to make that area work so much better for us from a traffic standpoint on the internal part of the campus. We still have issues getting people off Highway 90 and off of Blue Bar Road, and we're going to do the best that we can do. Sheriff Peterson helps us a lot with his manpower to come out there and assist us on the major events. And that's our story. And one last thing, I wanted to give y'all just a quick update. Y'all helped sponsor an event in Gulfport, a Montegraw, a new Montegraw event. And Supervisor Martin and Supervisor Powers attended, and they can tell y'all, y'all got your money for it. It was a really nice event, very family-oriented. And even with bad weather, we had tremendous turnout. So, I want to say thank y'all.
The hotel.
Hotel.
Where are we?
We are, I'd like to add, I attended the Morgan Wallen concert with my grandchildren. They did an excellent job getting in and out of the Coliseum was amazing. The lines moved quickly. I hadn't been to a concert in a long time. Probably won't go until my grandkids want to go again. It was a little loud for me, but he says he's got one coming up for me that may be much louder. They did just an excellent job. It was so well-run. I just couldn't have enjoyed it more, and I appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'd like to also add, I can't, I'm sorry.
I'll get you. No, no, go ahead.
Sorry, Marlon. I wouldn't have jumped in your grave that fast, anyway.
Go ahead.
The, I'm totally amazed at the amount of people you can move in and out of that place, just like you was that. And then have another event the next night. That's amazing. I can't get six of my kids in the car and go somewhere at the same time. And y'all, it's amazing to me.
Well, we have a very good team. We're still shorthanded. We still only have 22 full-time employees. And before COVID hit, we were at 29. Now, Michelle's in my ear every day. We got to get some more help. Hockey, y'all approved hockey. They've already sold 600 season tickets in less than a week. In less than a week, they sold 600 season tickets. So, they're on the go.
But I want to commend you, you and Michelle, and the commission. Absolutely marvelous job. I don't know how you do it. It's amazing.
Now to answer your question.
Sorry, Marlon, go ahead.
Last but not least, the hotel is proceeding. Marriott was in my office along with the developer about 10 days ago. Marriott really likes the site a lot. They're very bullish on it. They don't want to release the brand. They told me, and I told them I would keep it confidential, but it would be a Marriott flag and it would be an extended stay property based on the types of businesses that we currently have and that we see more growth in, which is youth sports, dance competitions, flat shows, things that people are going to stay three and four days and want to bring their family to. So, I see that as the beginning, okay, not the end. I see the first one getting us two to three more. And that's where that property that you have pictures of that's a parking lot now ultimately may be needed for expansion of more hotel rooms down the road. That won't be, that won't be under my watch. Hopefully, that'll be under Michelle's watch. But she's dialed into the plan. She knows the progressions, how they're going to work. And I can't tell you how valuable this lady is to all of us here on the coast and the jobs she does at the Coliseum. She does an excellent job for us.
A hotel would probably increase the convention booking.
It'll help. It won't be large enough in terms of number of rooms. For some reason, their studies don't justify building the amount of rooms that we think that should be there. However, I'm a firm believer that once they get in there and see the demand, that's going to change very quickly. I really believe, especially the run that we're on. The only thing that's going to hurt us is the national economy. And as Shavitz mentioned, you know, $4, $4.5 a gallon gas, that ain't helping anybody.
That's not helping.
No, sir. Y'all have any other questions for us? Thank y'all. Y'all are always welcome to come to our events because it's y'all's role as oversight over us. I encourage y'all to come and see what we're doing because right now, we're doing well.
And thank you, Matt. And selling Michelle so hard makes me think you're about to retire.
No, I've got to deal with Beverly. Beverly and I have a deal.
Naturally, this weekend and next weekend, we'll have over 300 volleyball teams, high school-age volleyball teams going through the facility, and the economic impact of that, those two events alone is huge.
Dance clubs, man.
Those dance clubs, competitions, yeah.
We really appreciate it. Thank y'all so much.
Anytime y'all have any questions, call. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have item four, recognize Alice B. Hawkins, testing PD Economic Workforce Development. Bring us availability on the addition.
Did recognize the note. It's been a few years. Okay. So, just to give you a quick update on redistricting, Okay, so just to give you a quick update on redistricting, we have not, we have not made any changes yet. Kind of just looking at the numbers, and I wanted to, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, give you the totals. Your total population based on 2020 census is 2,006,370. That means that the ideal value for five districts would be 41,724 people per district. Of course, it doesn't divide up that way, and it won't, but we'll try to get somewhere near a 5% within a 5% deviancy for each of the five districts.
About 10%?
10% overall, yes. But if we try to stick with five or so or under for each one, then that should work out under the 10%. Just to tell you what it is right now, District 1 has a 1.9%, 1.96. District 2 has an 8.01%. That's, so you're up. District 3, .04%. District 4 is down, so it's a minus 12.14%. And 5 is 2.13%.
Now, what does that mean?
So... You're going to have to give some applause, probably. If you're lower, you're going to have to take some.
I think I was the lower one.
Yeah, you're...
.0...
.04.
Yeah, that means that District 3 is going to have to grow a bit.
Yes.
And the 8% is going to have to decrease.
And that's the way it works. I mean, yeah, if you're down, 4 is the only one that's down, so they'll probably have to take some, definitely. So everybody else will...
Why is everybody down? People moved out?
Yeah.
Kansas is a minority district, so that throws a little tinker in making sure that he stays.
Yeah, you want to maintain your minority.
No, I understand that. I'm just looking at the reality, 1.2% and mine's gone up to 8%.
And that's somehow where...
Basically, people moving out or just...
Well, it could be also the census numbers are the best, they're only in the ones we have to use, but not everybody completes the census. So you know, there's some that's with margin of error.
District 2 has always been kind of the growing district.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really, District 2, the last time we had this was a big one that we had to pull from.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, I mean, it's not a ton of changes that'll probably have to be made, but the way that we prefer to do it, and I talked with Tricia briefly, Tim and I haven't talked yet, but is to have each one of you come in and kind of look at your numbers, where you might be able to pull some population from that would, for instance, make sure you maintain the minority majority. You really don't want to go any less than it is.
This is like 59% or so.
You're, uh...
53, 55%.
I know where you need to pull.
You are...
Yeah, for me, I know what y'all are saying.
57. You're 57.79% minority.
Try to stay along that.
You want to try to, yeah, you really don't want to go down.
Right.
Definitely about 50, but you really don't want to go down.
And that's based off of 18 and up voting.
That's right, voting age.
I thought one time it was even 49 or 50%.
It may have been.
I think you're right. Yeah, so...
So the timeline.
Okay, timeline. So what we wanted to look at, and Ken Holland with GRPC, he couldn't be here this morning, but he's helping, or he's pretty much doing the mapping. So we were looking at possibly the week, the first week of April, April 5th, anytime that week.
For some type of workshop.
Well, if anybody wanted to just kind of come in, we could set a day or two days.
Each one of us.
Each one, yeah.
Yeah, I've got with him, I've seen.
Okay. So you want me to just contact y'all individually about a good time that week? I can do that. Is that okay?
It'll be at GRPC's office.
Yes, at GRPC's office.
How does that work? So like, Marlon's going to have to take some district, some people. So would you meet, I would just think to meet with people that have to go get more people first?
Well, everybody's going to have to, so it doesn't, I mean, we can look at scenarios, and the thing is, the software has, we can do it in real time. So if Marlon came in and we see where he's going to take some of one district, we'll meet with, we can look at different options when we meet with the next person and say, no, I don't want that, so let's move it here.
So let me ask you a question. Is this one to take this voting cycle or next year's voting cycle?
It will be for the next...
Next year.
Yeah, next year. So the timeline is, if we do that the week, that first week in April, then I would think mid to late summer, with barring any major controversies, I would think that, you know, you can probably have it done. It does not require a public hearing anymore. I would suggest you have one, but it does not require it anymore because you don't have to do the Department of Justice pre-clearance.
And just so the board is aware, we have got inquiries and letters from various groups asking for documentation of what we're going to do on this redistricting. I told them we don't have it, so give us something we don't have yet.
Right.
Harris County School District's got other records request. I've just had calls and inquiries asking when we're going to have it.
So a lot, so basically, the only thing that's out there now is just showing the areas that grow, that what I've seen, population-wise.
And one thing, there's split districts. We've had a hard time, we redistrict two or three times. It's small enough in here, I guess. And you get a split district where you have a senator over here, and you have to change precincts, and that confuses everybody. You need a really good length of time so that everyone, for me, with where to go.
Where to go by, exactly.
And our circuit clerk, she really has a tough job.
Right.
Making sure that the precincts and the voting precincts are the same.
That's right.
Anyway.
That's right.
And there's one more point in my district, too. I have a tiny piece of Broadmoor, but nothing around it, and a tiny piece here. It's not fair to my people because when I'm paving roads, what am I going to do? I mean, of course, we don't stop, but you see what I mean? Dropping in sections just does not make sense.
Well, you want to be as contiguous as you can be, so I mean, you're going to have to get some up, so that might...
That would make sense to do, right. My first house is in Broadmoor. It's a great area, but it doesn't make sense when you used to wrinkle.
Right.
That has to do with stuff that we went through for many years. That's why you see that.
No, I understand the reason, but in this case, if it needs more, then that would be the first place to start.
Yeah, that's true, but you still have to get...
The number. Yeah, I'm just pointing out geography, too. It should be, you know, just to cover the sense if possible.
Yeah, and you don't want to, we had this in another county, where you don't want to, you know, somebody's voted somewhere their entire life, you know, and then you move that. You try not to do that as much as you can, but sometimes the voting precincts...
We have to.
I like my own bow, you can move my house back.
How strange.
You know what I mean?
I did, I'm over there.
How does the Harris County School District, board members districts, how does it, how is it contiguous to the Board Supervise District?
You know, the redistricting is... Well, it's different. I mean, the redistricting is completely different, and they're going to be done under this...
I'm just kidding, but it is district-like, different because the cities, the public schools, the city school districts are not in that, so it requires the districts to be different.
That's right.
The school board districts to be different.
Geography would be different.
District, even though they call District 3, District 4, District 5.
That's right. The geography is different, and I don't know it exactly. I think we did do theirs 10 years ago, but I don't think we talked to them. We did do theirs 10 years ago, but we haven't talked to them this time.
But it is, it's different.
They may be calling you.
They called us.
I talked to them recently, and they may be calling you because that's what I told them.
They're going to have to do it as well.
They were asking, they got a letter from some group demanding what they were going to do on redistrictings, and they called me and said, what's the county doing? I didn't know at that time, so I told them, you probably got to call them.
They're sending to the one man, one vote.
They are too. Yep, definitely. So I'll just contact everybody kind of individually, see when the best day is during the week. Okay.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Up next, item five. We recognize Judy Young, Executive Director of Coastal Mississippi Discuss. Here today matters.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Judy Young. I'm your Executive Director for Coastal Mississippi. I come to you with well over 25 years in my industry, in organizational management, and in destination marketing and management. Thank you for the support of Coastal Mississippi, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of information. Our audit is underway, and we are, we can like everything. It's going to come back positive. And then we're going to be coming to you with some more robust reporting. It will come through your commissioners, but it will come to you monthly, and it will include most of the market data that we have as well as the hotel occupancy data. You probably have already heard that the gaming industry's lodging revenue is up 24% and non-gaming is up between 13 and 15%, depending on which report you read. So we're really positioned well going into peak season of summer for the communities to all do excellent, especially those that provide leisure activities for family-friendly opportunities. That's going to be top of mind, and we'll be bringing our reach in from the six-hour radius down to the four-hour radius, primarily because of the field costs. So you'll see that ebb and flow as we move forward. It can be a big positive for us because we have enough concentration of population within that four-hour drive market to really make a difference for some of those folks who are not able to, because of the rising prices, take those out of state or multiple states away, five to nine-day vacations. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the youth sports. I know that Matt mentioned it. I've been leaning on Matt a lot. We've had a great relationship so far, and I think it's going to continue. They are amazing. I watched them change that facility from Mardi Gras ball to concert to monster truck, and those, they were there at 3:00 AM in the morning to flip that to monster truck. It was, it was amazing orchestration, orchestrated element. But the USSA Global World Series, it's youth baseball, and we'll be bringing that to the area. It's 3,000 room nights in multiple counties, including Harrison. And that's just an example of the sports market that Matt noted. That is the highest spend per night of any market segment that we can pursue. It has the least impact from an ecotourism standpoint, but the highest economic impact, well over $240 a day per person. Huge, huge. And if it's anchored by indoor facilities, that's money in the bank, not weather-dependent. So you'll see that market grow for us. We also had a great program with Expedia that you probably already heard about. From November to February, that marketing program alone generated nearly $1.1 million in room revenues. So as we shift to more digital, micro-targeted campaigns, you'll see a very detailed reporting coming to you from your commissioners. Again, we have a seamless relationship with the Coliseum, and it's, I've met Development Authority folks and had been to the Capitol two or three times. So I apologize that I hadn't gotten here before then, but we had the Mississippi Tourism Association press conference, and then we had our own Coastal Mississippi legislative effort. Thank you for attending Supervisor Powers. So we're on a fast track, and I'm happy to serve, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'll answer any questions that I might need to.
I'd like to welcome you aboard. You reign from Texas, I understand, and we welcome you and wish you the best of luck and appreciate, you know, the level of playing field that I'm sure you're going to provide. We also have a commissioner, Kim, you know the one?
Commissioner Fritz.
That person is on the side. He works with the commissioner. Oh, hey, how are you? But, and I want to commend Harrison County Commissioners for the hard work and the diligence that they have, due diligence that they went through. God love them, 40 bucks a meeting, and they keep a grilling like most politicians. And I really want to tell them how much I appreciate and thank them for standing up for what is right for Harrison County and for the entire Gulf Coast. So welcome aboard, I think.
Nice meeting you, welcome.
Thank you so much. I always throw out there that my husband's from Mississippi.
That's right.
I'd like to just mention one thing. I was going to talk to you about this kind of in private with the commissioners, but might as well say it now, and this is way before your time. I really think it's imperative that we switch from a New Orleans advertising agency, spending a million a year, to an all-add agency that doesn't live or understand the magic of this place. I think it's imperative, even if we have to break it up, because someone told me in the past, oh, we don't have a local company that can handle all that. That is BS. That is inaccurate. That is 100%. Because I'm in that business, and I know these people. And again, this is before you, Judy, and we're so thrilled you're here. But that is one thing, really, it was before you. I think it is imperative. I know I've told you that, Commissioner Fritz, and I think we really, really need to revisit and focus on that. That is the one thing that has been, that means a lot to me.
See what I can do about it.
But thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy. Welcome aboard. Thank you, God bless.
Thanks. Next, we have the consent agenda. The agenda items numbered 6 through 14 have been placed on the consent agenda. Claim appear to be routine, non-controversial matters of which supervisor likely to agree.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 15, order acknowledging receipt of and approved petitions with decreases to the 2021 real property rule as recommended by the tax essential.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 16, order approved travel for Trey McKnight, Jurisdiction Director, to attend and keep Mississippi Beautiful Awards and Luncheon to be held in April 28 through 29, 2022 in Richland, Mississippi.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 17, order approved travel for Teresa Hydrick and Kelly Henderson, co-administration, to attend the 2022 National Flood Conference.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 18, order approved payment of plan listed as recommended by Jacqueline Turner, Harrison County Engineer.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 19, order approved payment of plan listed as recommended by Jacqueline Turner, Harrison County Engineer.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 20, discuss possible projects, including authority to submit for max funding from the state and determine priority of projects within this as recommended by Dr. Turner, County Engineer. Exactly what you got for us?
I submitted to you on the agenda, and I believe you two have a copy of the list of projects that I've been accumulating based on comments, emails, meetings, whatnot, about needs in the county, and that, that list is kind of put together in a preliminary kind of sorting way, and so we're here to kind of discuss that.
Okay. Any discussion or what happened? Anyone add to that? I mean, I reviewed the list, it's a good list, and since all the priority that we have been discussing in previous meetings has been met.
Yeah, I think one, one big change is that the initial project list was based on the initial description of available funds, which focused on water and sewer at this level, and the final federal ruling did add drainage is an absolute approved thing. There's been some mental health projects suggested that I've heard a lot of support for, and so we've kind of been trying to incorporate those into this list.
So Jackie, I have a...
So Jackie, I haven't just all these titles. I'm hitting about that eighty million.
The entire list, if you get all the way to number thirty-one, is based on our very preliminary estimates, but with the market doing what it's doing, is close to ninety million, and I think that that's a good target, because over time, I think some of these projects have the potential to get funded another way. You may decide you want to shift things around. Projects may come in low or high. I think it's always better to have more projects available and ask for the match than not enough.
Don't be shocked when you get that first, those first bids in.
We're already shocked.
When you get those first bids in, that's going to affect all that priority.
And, and one thing I will tell you is that that ninety million, the initial list of utility projects, resubmitting them based on comments we got from the state, I'm adding a twenty-five percent contingency estimate kind of thing, because we know prices are going up. I mean, anytime gas goes up, plastic goes up, pipe goes up, so.
No doubt that.
I, I, that does include that increase already.
I'm sorry, with sewer. Remember that pump I told you about, like, the catch that was built too large? Because we need to develop that whole area by the Lorraine Road Bridge. That's why it stinks to high heaven. We can't even sit in our backyards at night. It's so disgusting. Is that one of these on that list?
It's, it's not. I know the Utility Authority is working on shifting flows around to try to equalize flow and get rid of that smell, and then, of course, if there's something else that we need to do, I think it's going to be.
Until that whole area is developed, it will not be fixed, right? Until we spend a lot of money on it?
I think that, my understanding is that there's a way to shift some flow to run through there from other areas that'll get.
So I tried about eight years ago, before I was even in office, still on the air, and I begged, and the city started flushing it for us. I mean, Hensler Lane is right next to our neighbor. They're about to move out. I mean, it is disgusting. The flushing didn't work. They said they built it so large because that whole area was going to be developed. So we got to do something, I mean.
So what, what I've seen before where, where list stations are built too large.
No, not by you.
It's right there on the Lorraine Road.
You know IMS?
Pump station.
Pump station, depending on the way the wind blows, and then right by my backyard, behind my wall, we have like a little burp pipe, like a manhole. I'm not kidding.
It's air leak. Probably air leak valves have come.
You know what I'm talking about.
I'm just kidding. No, I never smelled it.
Jackie, I've checked into that, too, and all of the restaurants that have grease traps, that's all going to that, and that is one of the worst.
We only have literally one, now two restaurants.
I'm on Highway forty-nine. On forty-nine, they all go to that pump station.
All of forty-nine tells to industrial city.
Just keep in mind what you're talking about there, really the responsibility of the City of Gupport. That's within the City of Gupport.
A hundred percent? Has nothing to do with us? We, we can do nothing?
Most likely, whatever problem, I guess what I'm saying to you, Rebecca, is whatever solution that we would come up with, the utility, when I say we are talking about the Utility Authority, it's the City of Gupport's going to have to pay for it.
Gotcha.
Okay? So when you're asking her to look at her priorities from the Board of Supervisors perspective, keep that in mind, that that's the City of Gupport.
Ooh, because you're on the Utility Authority, so I thought, and you're on it, too.
Yeah.
So you got to ask.
Can y'all keep that in mind?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can.
I can ask Gupport.
We can encourage. We can encourage you on the solution and come up with it through the Utility Authority, but ultimately, the approval of it is going to require the City of Gupport, because the City of Gupport's going to have to pay for it.
The only reason a pump station would smell about three is because the sewer is sitting there too long.
That's the most common thing. There are a few other, but that is the most common. And usually, if something's built too large, some of the simple solutions is to put some kind of structure in there that makes it a little smaller, or else to add a chemical treatment, then oxygen.
So do you need a motion to accept this risk of prioritized projects as recommended by our, to make that motion?
Well, and to make sure that it's authorized to the state to match for all of these projects.
Right. Okay, put a motion in proper section. All right, then.
To authorize the state to match?
To put in a request to the state to match all projects on the list, and then also to move forward at this pri, this priority?
Yes.
Yeah. You got to get something, go on.
Give me a second.
If we, Doc, I'm all, that's two brothers, that's second.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion in the motion? All in favor, let the motion say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one is order approved payment of communication international invoice number five-eleven-four-three-two-eight-five in the amount of two-two-two-seventeen-seventy-six payable from for the completion of the milestone second of the IPMPLS microwave system pursuant to the term of the condition of the contract as recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communication Commission. Motion. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, order approved travel for Chief Pat Sullivan to attend the Mississippi Fire Investigators Association Spring Seminar to be held from April sixth to twenty-eighth. Motion.
Motion.
Right. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, order approved care services contract renewal striker sold source in the amount of seven thousand point seven dollars for permanent proper maintenance and repairs for fire services beginning April one, twenty-twenty-two. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four, order indicating item transfer for capital expenses to purchase two trucks for five services from Jackson Mack, AJI, KF, LTD at thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars each, state contract number. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. That's cheap. That's cheap for a fire truck, yeah?
That's not, that's not true.
It's not really a fire truck.
It's a truck.
It's a truck for the fire station, not a fire truck.
We would buy about ten of them if we could get the.
It says fire truck.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five, order authorized IT department to hire a trainer, take for the purpose of training employees and seniors, the county senior senators, and optimize and transfer to an amount of twenty thousand dollars from zero-zero-one-one-five-two-nine-twenty to zero-zero-one-one-five-two-four-zero-eight for the same. Motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Exactly. What is that?
He's taking money from the capital account.
No, no, I mean, who is the person? What is the function of this person? It says hire.
What are they going to be doing, Bob?
Yeah, what are they doing?
IT, they'll be training and counting.
Training who, for what?
Employees, county employees, and seniors.
On what?
Security issues that they can come across. We can train them how to use Office Word. Train them how to do things on the computer. If their, if their computer locks up, how to push the power button in for ten seconds, restart it. Just easy little things that we know how to do as IT people, to get them better, better understanding of what a computer does. I'm also wanting to do some really, really good tech, high-tech classes, like show them how to build a computer. I think some of the, some of the seniors would enjoy that.
Now, the salary that you got, he's saying we're transferring twenty thousand.
That's, that's for half the year.
That's the actual salary.
No, that's, that's just for half the year. It'd be sixteen dollars an hour.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
It's part-time. How many hours?
I'm hoping to do, do full-time.
Full-time but part-time. For six months, we say.
We do at least twenty, thirty hours. We do.
I thought we'd chill, Nick. Well, we've got six months left.
Well, assuming that, assuming that you're going to be training at some point in the future, all the people are going to be trained, what is that person going to do?
Well, as I said, we need to train our employees for security items.
Got you.
That, that's, that would be great, but our employees, we could continue training on aspects that go, goes on in the county. The seniors, I mean, I'm assuming that more seniors.
You think there'll be a continuous need?
I think there will be a continuous need for training people on the computer.
It's a, it's a matter of safety for, for our seniors. So many seniors are being scammed day after day after day. I think that this is going to help them, if, if not, at least know the warning signs of not, don't do it, don't do this, and don't do that, and don't do something else. I mean.
I think it'd be beneficial.
Wrong, we're going to get scammed.
So this, this, this is new employees. It's strictly training.
It's going to be so many hours of training, and then so many hours of assisting us also with IT. I mean, I don't know if I could do forty hours of training, depending on.
But you could use the extra hand.
We can definitely use the extra hand.
Set that, they get shake and set up the printer.
Like getting speakers in the boardroom and go.
We can, we can, we can hear it pretty good.
Knock it up, Ford.
Rob, we have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Tell us about, we had some people trying to attack the county. What have you done to stop it?
We, we've had a lot of things going here in the past two months. We had, we had someone attack two of our domain controllers. We had one of our employees get their bank account wiped out because of something they did on the computer that, you know, like I said, training.
Shouldn't have been doing it if they weren't there.
Yeah, you should never store your information on the computer, never store your credit cards, none of that stuff.
That just brings up an education, training. It brings up an interesting question for me.
When something like this happens, when you say that we've been attacked, does that mean that the county specifically has been attacked, or did someone just random doing things?
The county specifically has been attacked, yes.
First of experience, they got ours a couple of years ago, and what they did is they came in and locked, all the computers locked up, and then they sent you an email saying for ten thousand dollars to unlock your computer, see the password. We were fortunate, and we have a daily backup, although they were about a week behind when it happened, so nobody was following instructions, imagine that. So we lost a week's worth of data, but we, because ours was backed up, they just deleted it and put the old stuff back on there. It's a problem, and they, they, they were aggressive. They would start out saying, I think, first demand was like twenty thousand dollars to unlock your computer, and then they started going down from there, got down to like fifteen hundred. But if you pay them, just like feeding them, unfortunately, we had a backup and didn't have to pay it, but that's what they do.
Okay.
When the memorial attacked, too? It was, I think, the memorial attacked as well.
Rob, maybe we can reach out to Keith, third target, cyber command, training, education. I'd love for them to come, maybe do something with your, your higher staff.
Yeah.
Can they do it for the military?
In further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Out of opposed, motion carries.
One, one question. S N P D D still here?
Yeah.
Do y'all have grants available for the elderly, for such as, for education, training?
I mean, there might be something in the aging program. I could check.
Could you check that, of course?
I'm not really sure on that.
I meant to do that last week, and I never got around to it. Could you? Thank you.
And just so you know how it happened, somebody sent an email, somebody in the office, about some bill they owed, and you clicked the link. So when I clicked the link, that's how. So you got to be careful what you're looking at.
All right, okay. All right, next we have, uh, zoning.
Yes, sir. These two cases are standard business with the planning commission. We ask that you compare with the recommendations of the planning commission.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, compare. This, sex for discussion, I think.
I'm good.
The one in your district was just combining properties that was not.
So to build, but I get, I have some any of them that I've looked at before. I'm cautious. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, we got, you made the motion. We've got to get a second.
We couldn't hear it, yes. Okay. All three of us couldn't hear.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, okay, thank you, motion. All right. Yes, sir. Item twenty, order approved payment of plan this paid from the tort account.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, order preparing county administration informant that listed in the file payroll clerk. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Order spreading upon the minutes of personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed in the file payroll clerk.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one, order approved service source purchase for Hazard Control Technologies, Inc. For ACT F-500, ESCA, Celator. Former superintendent, five fighter agent of the coast, six thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars payable from state rebate fund one oh three two five six nine five.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-two, order approved transfer of funds in the amount of two thousand, sixty-six dollars and sixty-one cent for fire services rebate account one zero three two five zero nine two one. Fire services account one zero six two five zero six nine as requested by the county administrator. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. I have an agenda if I can get to it for the sheriff. I'm going to be here with it. Just come up on this share, we have an agenda. And in reverse, order authorized the local purchase of the twenty-twenty-two Jeep Gladiator four-by-four champion Dodge Jeep in the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars payable from zero two nine two one five nine one five. Your motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, okay, motion carries. Next, we recognize sheriff as.
You got them from thirty-three.
We got, we got another?
Number thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Oh, I missed it.
It's at a very far.
Thirty-three. Okay, when you're at thirty-three, it should be an order of purchase of a license.
Oh, that's, that's. Sheriff was trying to get to you too quick.
No, you're good.
Yes, not me, but.
Okay, I didn't, okay, I didn't, I didn't put it the order approved in the purchase of the twenty, of twenty, two, two-two-three DPS tracking unit from the lowest. License and.
Did you change that to a license for two hundred and thirty?
Hey, you want to change?
It's important that it be a license because of the purchasing. Make sure.
Tracking license?
Because you actually purchase a license, the units come free. So approving the, the life, purchase of a license for two hundred and twenty-three DPS tracking.
Okay.
Does that motion also conclude the hardware, the hardware had no charge?
Right.
Okay.
You're only paying for the license over here. The units are free, and that's just.
I'm, 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 motion, give me a second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries, case you.
Total, we have six ninety-one, thirty-one misdemeanors, ninety-four females, sixty-four that have cleared state arrest, and thirty-six felonies.
All right, thank you. Item thirty-five, order approved budget, order approved budget amendment to line item zero zero one, two hundred and nine-two-two in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, six, sixty-two, zero-three for purchase paid to make it to training in industrial video and control code funds and donation received and to ponder to the sheriff's office.
Motion.
Give me a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Order approved monitoring reverse of in-counting travel for the following employees.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
The man's been, these, these people moved.
In further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, order declaring asset numbers one seven nine five eight and one seven nine five nine, facilities and maintenance office trailer located at one hundred and seventy-six Lorraine Road, a surplus, proven random occupants to remove the same at no cost mechanic.
Motion.
Discussion. Give me a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed. Out, opposed.
Can I ask where the, where the look at that?
What's the drill?
It was the old man, old Soviet man.
Trust their own laws.
Their own laws. Their own laws.
All right, item thirty-eight, order authorizing interest of checks in amount of forty-two thousand one hundred ninety, thirty-four to certified mailing solutions, mailing first round of chance to reclaim land redemption maturity notices for the second, for the first and second condition district, payable from receiptable invoice from zero zero one, one zero one, five zero one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item thirty-nine. Order authorizing interest of duplicate warrants as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries, order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Item forty-one, order authorizing payments in amount of three seven five to the city of Lexington or the Lexington Port Fund for seventh quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-two, order authorizing payment in amount of ninety million two hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and fourteen cents payable from one seven seven eight hundred eight oh one and one seven seven eight hundred eight oh two to community bank for loan payment amount. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
This female will reimburse because.
Yes, most will reimburse.
So why are we paying off the loan if we don't have the money?
The loan is due three thirty-one, so we needed board approval prior to the next board date. Um, in discussions with Matt, Nima is processing payment and they were last week, so we're anticipating receiving that money prior to the loan date. So it might actually be a little bit less in interest if it comes in sooner, we can pay it once y'all authorize it.
In further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-three, order authorizing storage of paper products and cleaning supplies for distribution to the Harrison County senior citizen by Saint Mary's Catholic Church and for related purposes. Can we get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
Is this just temporary?
What are we?
Yeah, we're, I thought we got out of this.
If I, if I may explain, this was a, a entity that wanted to donate to the senior citizens. They proposed donating to the county, the problem of doing that, if you do it that way, then the county's gotta deal with it like it's county property. In this manner, we're just agreeing to pass out the paper goods to the, to the senior citizens as they need them, so the county's doing. They donated to the senior citizens center and we're giving it, handing it out for, they're actually donating directly to the senior citizens, like paper towels and toilet paper, things like that.
That's nice.
It was nice to them, but unfortunately, if we took it in as property of the county, we'd have to deal with it. It was difficult.
Anyway, I got.
But I suggest that they do it before.
All, all, good, all in favor, I mean, I'm sorry, in further discussion. Now, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-four. Order acknowledging receipt of the appraisal prepared by Allen Purvis on tax parcel number zero six zero nine A zero one zero zero four zero zero zero, zero six zero nine A zero one zero three four zero zero two and zero seven zero nine D zero one zero one five zero zero zero, adjudicating the appraised value offered to the property owners to acquire rights of, rights away for improvements in intersection of Canal and Land Road for project number except one four five nine, except an easement executed by Dickie McGee, Cardi Johnson and Eva Hughes, and authorizing the payment of the appraised value for each respective easement.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Tim and Tricia, for all you did in Holland Law Firm to get us these easements, it has not been easy.
Been working on it.
Canal and Land Road will be done soon, everyone. We'll start soon, I should say.
While, while we're on this subject for y'all, both of us, just so, there's one parcel here that involves a gas station. Uh, the property owners agreed to the fair market value portion, we're gonna take of the, of the property, it's gonna take part of the, it'll take the entire pump station and part of the underground tanks. And the discussion with Rebecca and the property owner, there's no way to remove a third of the tank. The gas tanks are in the ground and a part of this road, of the road is gonna cover part of those gas tanks, so they have to be removed. There's two issues with it, one is we're, we're going to agree with the property owner, since the tanks have to be taken out, the county's gonna agree as part of just compensation to take the tanks out. Rebecca applied to the M D Q for a grant for remediation, the grant will pay if there's any contamination, it will repay, pay for removing the contamination, just so the board knows that at some point in time, we're gonna have to bid out removing these gas tanks. The canopy and the gas pumps are nothing, but the tanks are, these have been there for a long time. Another issue came up with the Johnsons, the Johnsons. I'm not aware of this, but they told us last week on the opposite corner of the, this piece of property, there's a potential, there was a potential gas station there and there may be some tanks under the ground, which I don't know about, it's the first I heard of it last week.
Oh, Lord, well, the remediation, we count for that because we wanna make our ground better anyway.
We haven't even touched those yet, I don't even know where they are, this, this, the Johnsons came in and started telling us there used to be a gas station across the street and the tanks are still in the ground, we don't know that for a fact, yeah, I'm just telling you.
We'll just find the old stuff, get a metal detector and see.
I would think that.
I guess the question that I would have, Tim, at what point will the county without any grant fund be responsible if, if something happens?
You, well, oh, for the underground stores, then, when, when, when this gets complicated, because a prior property owner that was operating a gas station can be liable for all of this, whether or not he is or not, is another issue. If there's contamination, we don't know that there's contamination here. M D Q's been in discussions with him for a while, so we don't know that there's some underground contamination here. There's always potential for having to remove the stuff if we, we bought land and it has gas on it underneath the ground. Still gas, it can go, it can travel long distances.
Right.
We don't know that's happened here and I don't think it's happened, and the M D Q's been involved in this site.
Well, what I'm saying is, at what point, are we getting grant money to remove the tanks?
They will pay for the remediation, not for the removal of the tanks.
So that cost comes back to us.
Well, keep in mind, the reason we had to do this is because the initial route was over to the north.
I know.
We had a million dollars.
Yeah, with the power.
With the power company.
We've already saved a million, so anything passed out.
So you shifted south and now you're gonna end up probably with three, maybe four hundred thousand dollars, including removing the tanks. Total, paying the property.
Because grants doesn't cover land acquisition, uh.
No, it won't, you know, I don't think it covers, as I understand, does not cover removing the, actual removal of the tanks. It will only recover remediation of any underground contamination, is what I understand.
But that's the grant that will cover that.
Right, and it's actually called underground water remediation grant for that, because if we do have it, we wanna clean it out anyway, we don't wanna just leave it.
I think you have to, when you, when you do this kind of work, you'll have to reclaim it, so they, they, and we've talked to M D Q a number of times, so they understand the issue.
And across the street west of, of this property, across, there's potential gas tanks in there.
We, we don't know that, there's a family that came in last week and as we were talking to them, they just generally said, well, you know there was a gas station across the street that has tank. I, the, the M D Q monitors these tanks when they're underground, I doubt there's any tanks there because we would have known about it, M D Q. They probably were removed, removed and the, the family just doesn't know that. So, I don't know it, I just wanna make sure the board's not surprised, but we just wondered at this past week meeting with these Johnsons.
Hopefully they're wrong.
They, they, they just may not know that it got removed, it was, it wasn't them, I think it was another family that owned it before.
Just curious, when the property is appraised and you have potential, uh, gas tanks, does that increase the value of that property, assuming the, uh, potential of liability that existing?
In this case, it actually increased it because it was an operating gas company.
He was actually operating.
And so you're removing his tanks and now that damage to the remainder is greater because it has to compensate for that loss. So it kind of increased the value because it was operating gas.
I can understand that, because that's a business he was.
And he'll have to pay to put it, he, in fact, he's taken it away this week, looked at putting the gas tanks in a different location, so. But anyway, we are making progress, by the way.
Good, thank you, all right. In, in, in further discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-five, order acknowledging receipt of agreed final judgment in the special court of eminent domain civil action number D two four zero one one one, ninety-six Harrison County versus David Carter and Eric Carter, vested ownership in Harrison County, Mississippi of the easement sold in a proven payment of thirteen thousand nine hundred two dollars and no sense, jointly to David Carter, Eric Carter, in case of federal credit. Motion.
Second.
Discussion, is that, which, which one is that, where is that?
Small Henry?
Is that more?
Quaylet Delilah, I'm sorry, it's Quaylet Delilah.
Quaylet Delilah?
It was the last easement we had and we had a problem in the domain case and it went to court and we had to try it, they agreed to it. Just look in that, that, we've already given this to the title.
You signed it, it's in on my desk.
This is pretty well closes out all the, that's in, so they'll be, we'll beg the contractor to bring it back.
March thirty-first is it?
The, the thirty-first?
Thirty-first of March. That's it, yes.
Okay, in further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries, order, item forty-six, order adjudicating tax bill of office thirty-one, twenty twenty on tax parcel numbers, one 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 zero J, zero two zero zero four, zero zero zero, one one zero J zero two zero zero five zero zero zero, one 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 zero J zero two zero one four, zero zero zero, one 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 zero J zero two zero one eight zero zero zero, one one one, you got jokes, huh?
I didn't stop.
Zero J zero two zero two zero zero zero, and one 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 zero J zero two zero two seven zero zero zero, for twenty nineteen tax forgiveness and death support.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I missed one of them.
I can't remember which one it was, could you go through them?
That's what I said.
Well, this, in our defense, we, we tried to, still have a ten of separately, we tried to reduce it to a lot.
I got.
You don't really have to read all that, you can just say aye, I was kind of paraphrasing the law. But that, these were all properties that had been conveyed to the city of Blox, so you could work a sample, it should have been six, so error assessment qualified as we said.
Right, sounds good.
Can you get a second?
Can we get a motion? Second. I think you had a special, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-seven, order right finding approval and request to the Mississippi legislature, seeking amendment to chapter number ten twelve, House Bill number eighteen twenty-three, locating private laws of the state of Mississippi twenty, zero zero four, record session.
Second discussion, I apologize, I'm hungry to know that I didn't, I, I didn't get the agenda, which, which one is?
This is ratified as the resolution that we passed, asking the state legislature to give clarification from the Department of Revenue.
Oh, okay.
At the five percent print taxes.
I'm sorry, I, I, I know.
We're just ratifying.
Y'all signed the request, there was a board action, which was basically.
I just, I won't make sure what, what, before I vote.
Sounds good, is, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-eight, order right finding board action taken at special meeting, held in September twenty first, twenty twenty, number twenty of twenty twenty. Motion?
Motion.
Discussion.
Y'all required, we had two meetings, we had two meetings that we noticed pursuant to the open meetings law. Sorry, I came up with it, there's a specific law that allows the board to call special meetings. There's a general law, which is the Open Meetings Act, that allows you to notice meetings, so we had held two meetings pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. I requested A G's opinions and got it back and the answer was not clear, to say the least. You can read it either way, so rather than take a chance, we're spreading only ratifying those actions at the meetings, so there's no question that the actions were leaked. It's just a.
Formalities.
You've got a specific law that's old, where the board's about a hundred years old and it requires certain notice. You got a new open meetings law that allows you to call them with great notice. And so we had used the open meetings law and the question came up, which one applied? They did not answer the question directly, so I just said, well, it's covered.
Covering our bases, yeah.
I don't know why you passed it over to me while you just say you can't.
Is it our basis?
So we're just making sure that the minutes reflect that those actions were leaked we took. I don't think there was anything of any consequence, we're just making sure.
Mike, any further discussion? We didn't go down there, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item forty-nine, order approving city's behalf of the use of the county equipment needed to assist in hosting the St. Jude Classic Tournament on March twenty, twenty twenty-two pursuant, pursuant to terms of the local governmental cooperation agreement between the city and Harrison County.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries item fifty-two, order Harrison County Board of Supervisors awarding bid contract for Lorain Road Bridge, project number L S B P, twenty four thirteen Harrison County, Mississippi to Gulf Three's Construction, Inc., being a lower bid, bitter, in amount of six hundred and thirty-three down to two twenty-five, and authorizing board president to execute the contract on execution by contractors recommended by Douglas Backer. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion, discussion, Doug, we, we have a notification process for those people on Lorain Road, if there's gonna have to be, uh, detour.
We said detour sign, sign prior to construction, again, I have never done a, a, a notification.
Just as long as do what we need to do, that there's no, you know, that has a plan.
I'll give the school one, or a bank.
Yeah, the school too, that's right, the school buses.
Yes.
Okay, in further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out, opposed, motion carries, item fifty-one, order approving the waiver of, of running fees and deposits required for the use of the, the board senior center by St. Joseph Irving, Irving Dance.
Motion.
Second discussion, can we waive the deposits?
I don't think we have waived deposits, we were about to.
Well, we did, we don't really have a deposit.
That's right.
I mean, as far as Auburn needs and reasons to the same thing.
And the others too, and that's, that's why I say, do get some of the senior, senior program.
And is there a charge for this?
Doctor, you wanna come forward, please?
I'm Dr. Phil, I live in Pass Christian at one ten Vista Drive. The South Mississippi Urban Ballroom Dances has been going on for about seven years. Mostly on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we do it, I think, at Frederick Center in Gulfport. But Pass Christian has been, we don't have a senior center, really.
You charge, what, eighty dollars?
No, we don't charge anything.
So nobody pays?
Nobody pays for anything, but what we're trying to do is to kind of, we're trying with Lowboy to move over there and kind of promote senior citizens there, and so, and for us to use it too, the answers are no, also with some of the recreation and all too. Uh, Lowboy gives us a more, better opportunity to get more seniors involved in West Harris. So that's what we're looking for, basically, we just wanna make sure we have use of the center on Thursday afternoons and Saturday morning.
Every Thursday and every Saturday?
Pretty much, yes.
Oh, on Saturday morning?
Saturday morning.
Not being used, that facility's not being used, so that's why we try to work these programs through the senior system. So it can be coordinated, we got the racket, not racket ball.
They play pickleball, but even with the pickleball, we, we're looking for.
You're working a crowd.
For the, the senior center in West Harris, in basically.
Yeah.
Okay, do you think I?
I think it'd be a part of a senior program.
Yeah, we'll be under.
That's why I can tell.
We'll be working on the senior center.
And they'll be signing, they'll be signing.
We'll sign it, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you going to teach Marlon to ballroom dance? That's all I want to know. I want to see.
We're teaching him line dancing.
Line dancing.
Line dance.
All right, no.
But then you can teach.
I know he can jitterbug. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Did I end further discussion, all in favor of the motions, say aye. Oppose, motion carries item fifty-two, order approving, order approving quarterly job report and timeline for the submission to the Mississippi government authority, reference Gulfport Highlands. Motion? Motion, second?
Second discussion, discussion, Tim, what, what? I guess the question that I'm asking is timeline for submission, job report, they're not having any job report, they have no jobs, why are we recording?
They were given a list, alright, Highlands was given a list of things to provide by the NDA in January twenty-two, and they have not provided it completely as of yet.
So we're giving them a deadline?
We have, they had a deadline in January to provide certain information, they have not provided it.
Where do we go if they don't provide it, or they don't make, where are we going on?
We've got, we've prepared a notice of default to send to us.
I'm sorry.
We have prepared a notice of default to send to Highlands, to put them on notice that they're in default of the crane. And so, you know, they just don't seem to be very concerned about it, unfortunately.
So why don't we just give them the notice?
That's, that's what we're.
That's right.
We've prepared it. My fact is drafted, ready to go.
If they default on this, and ultimately it comes back, and the sad part about it is, is then Gulfport and the county did it as a conduit to them for the C D V G money, if I'm not mistaken. And where, where do we go, I mean, how much are we talking about? Four million, five million?
Three.
Five million dollars that's coming back to the Harrison County. Where do we go, what do we do, can we get the property, what?
At one point in time, I don't remember, several years ago, when they were having a problem, we required them to do a hold harmless identification agreement with the county, so that if they default, we would have an action against the company which owns the property for hold harmless identification, otherwise, all we had was the street.
So the property is part of, I mean, ultimately, if I understand what you're saying, we stood the company, we could, we could ultimately get the property paid this off. Right.
But again, it's not a lien against the property, it's not like a mortgage where you just get the property, you would have to sue over hold harmless identification, and if you got a judgment, that judgment would go against the company as opposed to just the streets and infrastructure, so you would have a claim against the entire company.
And then they'll file bankruptcy and we won't get any.
Then that's a problem.
So we should get the land.
Just a, just a warrant, that kind of gets it.
And who would keep the land, it's all bankruptcy.
Well, the bankruptcy court could sell the land, and the money would be divided amongst the creditors, depending on how many creditors they have, you potentially have, you know, satisfied out of the sale of the property.
But this is why, when we had the lady with the domestic violence, it came and wanted us to be a co-applicant.
Yeah.
This is exactly why I could not support that, because we were a co-applicant, which makes us responsible, they just got me.
I know they disagree with my legal opinion, I stand by it, it was not a good agreement I recommended to the board to be partners in that type of situation, not that we don't want to help or support them, but to be in a partnership under those circumstances was legally dangerous.
When you're disrespect.
This, Highlands was.
It started, it started in two thousand and eleven. Construction was completed in fifteen?
Then, why did the county, why did we do that, what, why didn't the city do that as far as the C D V G grant?
They couldn't get it.
City didn't have the grant, is what my understanding is.
What?
City, Gulfport, did not have the ability to get the grant, the county had the grants available. So what happened, is I understand, is Highlands first was trying to get something from the city, the city didn't have it, they went to the county supervisor, the county supervisor, we had this grant that we could get, so that they flew the county, applied for this grant.
We'd never had the problem of default on the C D V G grant, so we hadn't at that time, but this is just a warrant.
And look, I do think, I mean, just my opinion, the growth that's going on out in this area, it's a little bit north of there, it's, it is growing leaps and bounds north of our town.
What's the whole?
So why did they just drop the ball like that?
For management, for leadership?
Is it asking, are they asking for too much, are they trying to make too much?
Maybe Tricia has an insight.
That was the deal from the.
I believe Allison.
But she said they paid too much, they paid too much, they paid too much.
Yeah.
And so, the county, the county attended about three years ago to get them to hire a local, um, Carla Alfonso to assist, and she brought deals to the table, and they went, because they don't have so much, they overpaid the property, long short.
So, any further discussion?
So the board's okay with sending them?
Do whatever we need to do.
Do we want to not approve this report?
Please, or please, or reject.
Tricia will reject the report.
Subsequent motion to reject.
Second.
Time to reject their report.
And just so the board knows, we're going to reject it because they did not, not, not NDA, the Highlands did not provide the information they were required to provide back in January to it.
So instead of approving this quarter job report, we are rejecting.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of that, subsequent motions, say aye. Oppose, motion carries item fifty-three. Or is it, yeah, switch item number fifty-four. Order approving any board of supervisors, county administrator, and board attorney for twenty, twenty-two annual NACO conference, began July twenty first to twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two, in North Carolina, at estimated cost of twenty-five hundred per person, and no cost to the county for control of the ten. Motion? Second discussion, all in favor of the motions, say aye. Oppose, motion carries item fifty-five, order approving installation of street lamps listed. Motion? Can you second discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye. Oppose, motion carries item fifty-six, order adjudicating and authorizing expenditure that's listed as necessary to advertise the opportunities, the results of Harrison County. Motion? Second?
Second, do you want to add?
All in favor of the motions, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Nope.
I'm sorry, do you have a question? I apologize, about D, seven hundred and fifty-two, The Place To Be Martyr Of Club? Who is that?
No, that's, that's an organization over in Gulfport, that they do, back to school things, and they're just going to have a forum this year, and they have a family day in the park, where they're just going to give some things to some kids.
Because I Googled it, and nothing came up, The Place To Be Martyr Of Club, but, okay, just making sure it's real.
Yeah, it is, appreciate it.
We can get mad if I don't want them to say it.
Well, I didn't even know who it was for, I mean, I didn't know what you just.
All in favor of the motions, say aye. Oppose, motion carries, and next, discuss the fire station in Long Beach Industrial Park.
Can you give you a little history of what we're talking about now, back in, and Tim and Pat here can help out, back in, I think the late eighty, eighty-nine, somewhere, eighty-two?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, I'm wrong, early eighty. Apparently, the Harrison County Development Committee, keep in mind that the industrial park is in the county, but it's adjacent to the city of Long Beach. Back in eighty-two, the Harrison County Development Commission apparently had an agreement with city of Long Beach, and the Harrison County Development Commission built a fire station with the understanding, or the agreement was, that the city of Long Beach would man that station, that station is in the industrial park, which is in the county, but it's very close to the city, right, almost walking distance from the county, uh, city line. Uh, purpose of, of the justification of it, as I understand it, was to get the industrial park credit, uh, fire credit down, so that would advance businesses or encourage businesses to come, of benefit of a lower fire rating. Apparently, since Katrina, that storm, that fire station was damaged, apparently FEMA agreed to build some sort of encapsulation around the fire station, and as a result, whatever happened, it's created a lot of mold, to the point now where it's not safe to man, so they've had to move out. City of Long Beach had contacted Development Commission, and ultimately, myself and Pat and Tim, uh, in reference to building another fire station, and they were kind of agreed in principle, depending on their city council, and depending on this board's agreement, split the cost of a new fire station fifty percent. Each one of us would pick, put fifty percent of the fire station, best estimates, I think, that Pat and him have been able to get in reference to that cost, that's the fire station was about one point three million, it's a two, two truck, two, what you call it, Pat?
Two bays.
Two bay fire station at one point three million, so that would leave us roughly about six hundred and fifty million to our part, and.
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
Six hundred and fifty thousand. Thinking of millions, now that's not bad. Six hundred and fifty thousand would be our share, six hundred and fifty thousand city of Long Beach. I think the benefit would still, it's kind of like a symbiotic relationship between the city and the county, we would still get some benefit, we'd be in the industrial park, and the Development Commission would get that benefit, because that would assure, Pat correct me if I'm wrong, but it would assure that the fire credit rating would still be low, and to maintain a low fire credit rating, which would benefit the, the participants in the industrial park, the companies in the industrial park, so.
Is the building, because of the mold?
Yeah.
Or abandoned because of the mold?
We're, we're in the process, and the city of Long Beach is in the process of sending an engineer or an architect, I don't know which one, they're going to get to go in and evaluate the mold, whether there's anything can be done about it, and which they doubt, I think, will, you cannot man it now, so.
You can tear it down, is it structurally, you're going to tear it down?
Yeah, would have to be demolished, if, 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 because of the mold. Pat, do you want to kind of address the board and represent the fire? Before you do that. Let me tell you my opinion on, on this deal, I don't have a problem with fifty-fifty, you know, we're going to have to come up with the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it, I think the Development Commission, I don't see they all left.
They all gone.
Development Commission has a dog in this fight, that's still their, their responsibility, so either they pay for it, or some portion of it, but keep that in mind.
Also, it's for Harrison County population.
It's, it's, well, it assists, but I'll let Pat address the fire.
I just, I just have a question, I just have a question of the structure, it's not, I mean, I can see mold in the, the guttenet.
What they did, Connie, as I understand it, the old station, and FEMA apparently wouldn't, at the time, after Katrina, wouldn't approve the destruction of it, build a new one, they approved some sort of, uh, encapsulation around it, you know, and somehow or another, between the walls, that's where the mold developed, and so it's, I, I, I don't know some, as we said, some engineer or somebody's going to go in and evaluate it, and, and I don't know, probably if you can get rid of the mold, then I would assume, if it were safe, they wouldn't need a new fire station.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The problem is that they built, basically built it around the building.
That's what I'm saying.
The old building's still inside the new building, and they're saying that the cost to tear it out is probably three or four hundred thousand dollars, then you may not have a building that's usable, even after you tear it out.
You've got wind loads to consider, and all, all those kinds of stuff.
In my discussion, Ms. Connie, in my discussion with the fire chief, and, and, and those folks over there, they're saying that to go in and do what we're talking about, you would think that would be the, the common sense thing, is to go fix the mold.
That is not common sense to me.
Yes, ma'am, but I believe, they looked at that, and, and if they could have done that, I think that's exactly what they did, but there, but the information that they got from the engineers or architects has said, this is going to cost, it, it's going to be more cost effective for you to tear this down and put another one up, versus us trying to do what we've got to do, and still not, and still have problems with it. So that's where they, they came from at that point. I, I can't talk about the cost, would it cost you, or, or all that stuff, that's not my expertise.
I won't be the just the fire issue.
Right, my expertise is, is fire protection, and that is a very important station, it covers an area that, that we need, the industrial park, and it covers, and we can take credit of five miles from that station, anywhere five miles from that station, we can get credit for that also.
It's in the county.
So that is a benefit for us.
Competition for it for a fire truck.
And we have.
They're going to pay for the fire manning the station.
They pay for all the manning and the fire.
And all the, all the.
All we do is build, build.
And, and we had discussions with an architect, um, who was kind enough to, to, to take a call from us, and we explained the situation, and that architect said, you know, these are some things, and thoughts, and so forth, so on, and said, yes, that's where he came up with that, within a certain boundary of footage, and, and we, what we basically said was five thousand square feet, housing four people in it, and two bays, and that would, not only would that take care of what we need today, but it would take care of any growth out there by having the two bays and the station being fixed where they can, they can grow if they have to.
Can you add on to it?
I think you could, yes, ma'am, I think it could be done, but I think what, where they're at with this right now, if they do it the way that the architect says, that it would meet the needs for, for quite a while. Um, we have a great relationship with, with Long Beach, with Chief Skelly, with that department, and, and responding, and anytime we have, we have something out that way, all we got to do is call, and they're going to send us as much equipment and manpower as we need.
Well, I'm not against it, I just want to, I couldn't figure out why mold would be the reason to.
Well, let me say that, let me, let me answer that question. Yeah, the mold is, is a life safety issue for the firefighters, we can't put firefighters in a mold infested.
Oh, I know, but I mean, you understand what I'm saying, where I would, you think about mold, and you want to go in and cut it, anyway, the structure.
That's why we're going to get somebody to go in.
Yes, sir.
Pat.
Yes, sir.
That fire station being located in the county.
Yes, sir.
For that particular fire district in that area, like Pineville Community and everything.
Yes, sir.
That fire station is included in our application for fire rating.
Yes, sir, we, we use, yes, sir, we, we utilize that as part of our fire rating in that area.
So you got a twenty-four hour man, manning of that station, so those people, it's not only the city of Long Beach, which they would, they benefit as well, but our community out there, and Jim's well aware of that community, that's where we had the issue with, uh, annexation. So what I'm saying to you is, I, I'm, I'm looking for just, I'm saying there is a justification for the county to participate in this, because we're getting a benefit out of it, and the citizens in that area are getting a benefit out of it.
I got you.
Now, how we pay for it, we'll discuss, that's going to be a. Pat, that's, you got, I'm sorry.
You know, that, just, just understand that, that is a, an important area for us to cover, um, and with that relationship that we have between Paschusian, uh, Long Beach, and, and you know, and reality is, and I know it may not benefit us directly, but it does benefit the city of Paschusian, having that station there, and they can back them up also, it, it's very important, so having that fire protection in that area is something that we, we really need to do. We could be in danger of losing some rating points if that fire station's not there. We talked to the rating bureau, they said, if you're making effort to keep that area covered, then we have no problem with letting it stay as it is, and, and they're even going to put off, well, they, they were due for a, an inspection of Long Beach, and they said, we'll, we'll, we'll hold off on that for, for a short period of time, so that you can do what you're going to do, and let's see where we're at, so they're working with us on that also.
So, have you talked to the fact that, I'm glad you brought that issue up, fire, the fire people, they fire rating people.
Yes, sir.
Have they agreed that if, if there's a commitment from the city of Long Beach and the county, uh, that they will. they will allow things as it is now wherever Long Beach is housed, so there won't be any temporary cost in reference to? So I, I had an issue with the temporary cost.
That, we, we, we talked to, uh, Richard Watkins with the state fire, with the rating bureau, state rating bureau, and we explained exactly what you're talking about, and he said, where they're located right now, with the location of Harrison County's fire station that we have right now, he's willing to not, not make them do any changes until that gets done.
Good deal.
And we, we gave him a timeframe that we thought it would happen if everything fell in place and so forth, and he was comfortable with that.
So, to explain to what, what we're talking about, there was a consideration by the city of Long Beach to rent some facilities in the industrial park, right close to the present fire station, and there was some cost involved in that, so I don't see any need in that cost if the fire rating people are not putting the pressure on us or will threaten to reduce the credit if we don't, uh, or if they're not making us put in a temporary facility.
Okay.
The next step is going to be, if we agree to split the cost with the city of Long Beach.
Does the board support on that?
Okay, that's, and then our decision there is how are we gonna pay for it? So I think that's gonna involve the development commission.
Okay, so now, you just wanna, now we just wanna...
If not all, a good portion of it.
And a bunch, that, that fifty million, that we have to probably come up with for...
Possibly, they can contribute to that, but that, what I'm saying to you is that they have a dog in the fight, put it that way. And it's not, I, I mean, as Pat said, it, it's not only the, the industrial park benefiting, but the community, so we have some dog in the fight, we being the county board supervisor, as well as the, uh, development commission.
Don't we have, didn't we pay off a bill too, if I may?
Yeah.
Jennifer, didn't we pay something off, and we have, uh, money that was going to the...
We still have, we still have part of the C-WALL tax that comes in each month that is allocated to the development commission.
That's probably all.
Right now, we have about three point eight billion dollars in that fund, so there's enough money.
Connie is, they got, they're gonna have to contribute to it, they have.
So we, so you want, you want to roll on that, but we will, we will...
I, I think we need to know, uh, a commitment from this board to, to the city of Long Beach that will pay fifty percent of the cost.
So does...
Okay, you got that written?
Second.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion? I'll favor that motion, say aye. I'll oppose, the motion carries. Okay, the board, Chair, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Pam, you have anything?
I don't think so.
So about eleven?
I just got through it, man.
I got two, um, and I don't have it with me, but I'll get it, I've written it out, I can get it. The Sands by the Sea is requesting five thousand dollars for the symphony, for their, um, annual symphony. So I'd like to make that motion that we support them to advertise the county resources.
And you have to share it.
How much is we sharing?
It's five thousand, so they're asking, I think. It's free to the public, I mean, it's not...
I, I, I don't have a problem with that, I think each one of us...
Yeah. Yeah, we got all in, can you put that in form of motion, the motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Can you give it a second?
A second.
Okay, if there's any further discussion, I'll favor that motion, say aye. I'll oppose, motion carries. I think we all agree.
Yeah.
One piece.
And then I got a sentiment really for executive session involving the purchasing clerk or agent. Since it's involved in personnel. Feel like it should be an executive session.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back, 'cause I have one, I have a, uh, I could advertise the county resources for an ACT prep testing skills and strategy workshop, be held on March twenty-sixth, uh, for eighth, tenth through the twelfth grades, and they'll be having some refreshments, so we'll kind of like support this, and a one with two hundred and fifty dollars advertising county resources. And I get this statement.
Y'all have something for the backups of what advertise, what they're gonna do, they'll put it in the brochure, so...
And it's free ACT for any child?
Well, it's, it's a decision, so this is the work, this is the workshop targeting, uh, grades ten through twelve on this one. They do several throughout the year, just targeting ten.
Makes you understand, they actually bring the kids in and there's a workshop to help them improve their scores.
Prepare.
And, and is that open to everyone?
Everybody. It's open to everyone. It's gonna be held at another school, any kid, it's gonna be held at another school for any kid that wants to attend more than one. Matter of fact, they highly recommend it.
We need to tell our Harrison County schools about it, though.
I need...
You know, if we're gonna pay for it, we need to let our tenth and twelfth graders know about it.
Yeah, this is, this is put on through some principals, so I'm sure they probably have it incorporated into the school system. I think one, the school board members is going to, um, she's a board member, right?
Okay, good.
School board members.
That's nice. Need a second?
Need to get a second? Okay, I'll favor the motion, say aye. I'll oppose, the motion carries. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a Wool Market Youth Baseball, um, who, I would like to advertise the county resources fifteen, um, hundred, and a, um, and I have the letters here, and a Wool Market Youth Softball, uh, girls softball, and that is fifteen hundred too.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Can you give the motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion, I'll favor the motion, say aye. I'll oppose, the motion carries. Okay, Rebecca, the county board is super out of power.
The, um, West Harrison Band has asked just to use the Hurricane Shelter on County Farm Road for their little hour-long award banquet, I'd like to let them do that.
For the county farm shelter?
Yeah.
You need a monkey?
Uh, yeah, that's my motion, sorry.
Second.
Can we get, any further discussion? I'll favor that motion, say aye. I'll oppose, motion carries.
I sent it to you, Brittany, I just sent you that letter, so we can make the details. And then, good news, the dog park at Harrison County Fairgrounds is complete, almost complete. Um, it is four acres, um, the Winter Classic is gonna donate, uh, their landscaping, that they bring in all those plants for their event. So when that's over, we're gonna have all those plants, um, planted at the dog park. It's on the annex land, right past the gate, so you can start using it. We're gonna do ribbon cutting soon. We ordered some of the little agility equipment, um, but it's ten weeks in the rears because of supply and demand problems right now. So we will cut the ribbon soon, but citizens are certainly allowed to use it as soon as they would like.
Mr. Rebecca, tag question, is that open to all dogs?
Only old dogs. All dogs. That's all.
This is a thing I introduced before the pandemic with Mr. Development Authority.
Okay.
I want all three board supervisors to introduce it on all three counties. And what it is, is paraplegic fishing tournaments, the new chapter on the Mississippi Gulf Coast.
Thank you, sir.
It's all I can introduce it for outreach purposes.
Okay, good deal, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, supervisor, how, anything else? Ms. Anne, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry, she started it. I'll tell you later. We did have the, last week I told you all that Taylor versus, um, Harrison County and the tax, such resolve was... And somebody did, but it's granted. Again, it has fourteen days to file a motion for attorney's fees, which are a little over fifteen thousand dollars. In discussions with their lawyer, his lawyer, they will not appeal if we'll agree not to pursue the attorney's fees. The questions of attorney's fees in nineteen eighty-three act are not whether he lost, it's whether or not it's frivolous in nature. Because Mr. Taylor did have substantial disabilities, that's not why he was terminated, but he did have substantial problems or disabilities. Whether or not we get attorney's fees would probably be about fifty-fifty.
What do you think, Pam, is it worth?
I, I think we ought, if he want to appeal, I would recommend to the board we not pursue.
Because we're gonna save money if he doesn't appeal.
He appeals, it's, we're gonna spend another fifteen thousand.
Right.
And that, whether or not we win an attorney's fees, argument's about, it's fifty-fifty. I mean, it's just not something that's, because he does have, it's not, I wouldn't classify his claim as being absolutely frivolous. It was for the wrong reason, but, uh, probably not frivolous. So I would recommend that to the board, convey that to the attorney. I gotta get something right in front of me, because the time for appeals, thirty days in town to file a motion for attorney's fees, only fourteen, so we kinda got a little issue going on there, but we'll figure that out. So that's my recommendation to the board. We don't need to do it in executive sessions.
So you need a motion to that thing?
No, I'm just letting the board know, as long as you just tell me that's, that's what y'all wanna do, I'm just, I don't need actually action by the board. Like, unless you got any other questions, about any other, we ain't got a whole lot of pending things.
I'm ready. Can I bring up the, an executive session, the zoning issue, or...
About what? Oh, I don't, I don't know how that qualifies for executive session, depending on...
I got, I do have that one, but you have something else?
I thought I might, but...
I'd wait on it, tell me the planning commissioner, let's see, I don't, I don't deal with that, I don't know. They haven't done anything yet.
Shall I make a motion to go into closed session, to go into executive session, to discuss?
Second.
Ms. Martin, clearly that qualifies for executive session.
I don't really want to go in the closed session.
It's a person on matter. That's true, no matter what other person, that clearly qualifies.
Clear.
I'll favor that motion, say aye. Motion, say aye. I'll oppose, motion carries. Tell me when it...
Just get there in the course of executive session, with more discussed, no matter the person on matter, the person in court, no matter who's taking.
Okay, is there anything else? If not, we get a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
We got one more thing, oh, wait, wait, wait.
It's right there, right there.
Here, you stand up and explain this, Trish.
Oh, I, all right.
Maybe you're a little smart.
So, about, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, we got a call from MDA, and there are some excess C W G hurricane Zeta funds available. It's twenty-eight million dollars that they want at your mark for Harrison County, because most of the Zeta damage was in Harrison County. So, they were, they were going through the process of trying to assess the damages, and so we enlisted Jackie and Chuck and, um, Matt Stratten, and so part of the twenty-eight million is to recapture some, um, of the, uh, what is that? The FEMA match.
FEMA match, the twelve and a half block match, they said would be eligible.
Good.
Which portions of that would be eligible, which I think factors into about three million, but there's about twenty-five million that can be used for, for projects. And so, part of the thing they wanna do is, is things that will mitigate future damages or things that we've had. So the beach, erosion, piers, boardwalks, um, where's the other stuff they said? Anything, uh, roads.
Sands, I don't know.
I don't know about sand.
Sandage, like, no, the beach.
Could this, could this be an opportunity to do all of our piers, the way Tim was saying of an orange beach, that waffle stuff? Or the pretty wave Beverly Hills?
The mitigation part could be...
We had two piers.
We've got to mitigate the gem, so some pier, that needs to be looked at.
It absolutely could be in there.
That should, we should...
You got the Tim Sampson and the Island Tim.
Yeah, that's not two piers in the county. And so, extend the boardwalk or, or, you know, anything with erosion control on the streets like that.
We talked about beech for a place, well, too, in terms of that.
Yeah, dredging, we think.
Yes, just have...
What about finishing the boardwalk on the beach?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And so, what we need from you is, they're on a very tight timeline, um, MDA's employed Stennis to help with the needs assessments to submit to, uh, C W G, and so if y'all would, A, accept, you know, proceeding and kind of give us a, an idea of what project you want to proceed with so that Stennis, because they'll do the, um, mitigation reports and get all that...
The piers and the boardwalk and, um...
Sandage.
Erosion and all that.
Sandage.
They're not gonna do that.
We got the outfall plan.
Oh, the outfalls, I do those outfalls, yeah.
Yes, definitely.
So this is only for mitigation.
Fifteen percent has to be mitigation, eighty percent has to be the affected area. Both, the mitigation could be more than fifteen.
Might want to talk to Chuck, too, because he has to go with it and dig those things out after a hurricane.
I mean, all those outfall packs would probably qualify, because they, one, were damaged by the hurricane, and number two, they, they would certainly qualify, there's a lot of them, I mean, the eighty...
Yeah, and one of the things that we mentioned on one of the calls was, like, every time that there's damage to outfalls that makes part of the beach unsafe, not only is that storm damage that can be mitigated and corrected, it also impacts the, um, access to the beach for tourism and all the rest of the businesses around there, which then impacts your LMI workforce population, which hits all the boxes that they need to check, so it's, it's easy to justify.
Just pure honesty, uh, Jackie, how you gonna mitigate the outfall?
The, um, one of the biggest recommendations they made is the ones that have, um, come apart over time have timber structures that anchor them, and they wanna replace those with heavier concrete structures to anchor them. And then also, any place that there's an opportunity to take, like, two or three of those, combine them into one larger outfall and break it out, then it's gonna have less damage in the future.
You could build those little wave things.
Yeah.
That's the idea, they took several of them.
Right. And they, you know, they asked, is there an engineering study that could show that? Yes, we have one available.
Can we add waves? Can we do a lot of those?
As much money as we have.
But they're a little bit more of a...
That's what they need to know, if you wanna do outfalls or the boardwalk or sand or punish it in one priority order.
Put it all on there.
You could probably repair the outfalls, some of them are in pretty bad shape. Some I walked, went and drove down and beat some of them.
Piers need to be up there.
The piers, we only have two.
Make sure that those are...
You have Sampson and the Island.
Right.
Wow, Sampson. And I feel that one too, pier around there. Those are two, that's a long way to go, you have twenty-eight million.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if we, if we start with the piers and then outfalls as much as we need that is not being covered by FEMA on both of those, and then the rest of it towards the boardwalk that'll keep sand off the road, that mitigates all that sand migration and all the money that MDA has to spend. I think that they would absolutely go for that based on what I heard.
That's what I heard, too, they, they really like the beach projects.
Yeah, I do.
Anything to do about the sand?
I'm sorry?
Anywhere to do anything to do about the sand?
Yeah, fuck, fuck.
We've studied that today.
Yeah.
Bad sand. We still wait down there.
We scanned, we scanned on the other one of the roads.
We refer to it as bad sand.
Okay, is there anything else?
Well, I guess we need, the board needs to authorize somebody to develop a list, so...
I mean, if, if y'all just take action, I think it's... If, if y'all take action to approve piers, outfalls, sand and boardwalk as our projects to do this in the priority?
It's Chuck.
I'm Chuck.
So I, I'm just telling them.
Okay.
And it's okay, go ahead and submit that to MDA's Stennis.
Yeah.
And I think we did on another matter.
Yeah, because they got a deadline, it's gotta be done within thirty days.
On another matter.
But you're, Mr. Holland. Are you accusing him?
I'm laughing at her, she's bad.
Marlon, I'm sorry.
Are you accusing him? What was the motion about?
I tried to relax you, but it's...
What then?
What was the motion you suggested we put in our minutes about the five thousand and fifty?
Let me, let's, let's draft something up, I'll draft something and put it on the minute, probably have to wait for your new purchasing clerk. There's, the statute provides that the board on its minutes authorizes the purchasing clerk to make those purchases under fifty thousand dollars, per the statute. And he's liable, or she's liable, or whoever it is, and not the board. I don't know if that was ever done and hasn't been done that I remember.
I want that job with that condition.
Well, I mean, they should have some responsibility if they're the ones doing it.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
I'll favor the aye.